Narcisse.
Here.
Troncosco. Walker.
Here.
We do not have a quorum. Would you like to?
Love to appoint some alternates, yes.
Okay. Mr. Barrios.
Here.
And Mr. Bennings.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to call it to order with the announcements. Please silence all cell phones. You have the right to appeal any decision. There are speaker cards available if you would like to speak for or against any item. Limited to five minutes each side and three minutes for an additional rebuttal. And once your case is heard, you have the right to leave the building. At this time, I would like to invite you to stand while Mr. Tom Seager does the invocation, followed by Mr. Arsemont as the pledger.
Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for the life you have blessed us with here in Saint Tammany. Lord, we'd like to lift up Gary Blocker's family on the loss of the chief. We also want to remember our fellow commissioner, Robert Troncosco. We humbly ask for your blessing on this committee as we strive to do your will, instilling us the wisdom to serve this parish in a fair and honorable way as we hear the cases presented to us here tonight. Lord, we thank you for the blessings you have conferred on our parish, its citizens, its elected officials, and all public employees and servants, and pray for your continued favor as we endeavor to serve you and the public. We offer our thanks for allowing us to live in the best parish, in the best state, in the best country on earth. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of the minutes from April 8th. Rennie.
A move to approve a minute is written.
Do I hear a second, Ben? Second by Mr. Doherty. All in favor?
Motion to appro- Motion to approve has passed.
Thank you. Going on to our first case, I'm going to ask Commissioner Arsemont to go ahead and read that into the record. Oh, any postponements? Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have requests to postpone three cases this evening, item number one, two, and number eight, which is related to Maison du Village subdivision. While the commission will have to read each case one at a time and vote individually, we have here Mr. Paul Marone, who's representing the three cases. And if you would like to hear the reason for the requested- for the request to postpone those three cases all at once, it's still you can, if you would like to read the first one after his comments, however you would like to.
I think what we're going to do is hear the reasoning and then we'll read it into the record, all three of them.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission, Paul Marone, on behalf of Mid-South Developers LLC and Maison du Village LLC, the developers of the subdivision. A little embarrassed to be back before you after last month where I told you I really thought we would have everything done for this month. But we're here again with a request to table it till next month. I will tell you that we had an extended meeting with staff yesterday, our engineers, clients, that was very, very productive. And at the end of that meeting, I asked everybody if it was their belief that we were close enough that I could represent accurately to the commission, that we are within striking distance, we should have this done for you by your meeting in June. And everybody believed that that was the case. So again, I ask for one more month indulgence. I think we are right on the cusp of getting it done. A lot of the remaining issues, we talked through and worked through in that meeting yesterday. So we should be ready to go for your June meeting if you would be so kind as to table each of these cases. And these comments will serve for all three. They're all related, and we would ask on all three cases.
All right, at this time, we're going to go ahead and read them into the record, and then I'll see if there's any public comment for or against. We're going to read them each individually, and then we'll vote on each one of them, the postponement, and see if there's any pros and cons. Mr. Arsemont? Sorry.
On number one, request to enter the Tammany Trace right-of-way associated with Maison du Village subdivision for the purpose of constructing a concrete sidewalk from the proposed recreation area to the Tammany Trace. Developer owner, Mid-South Developers LLC, engineer, surveyor, JV Berks and Associates, parish council district representative, Honorable Arthur Logland. General location, the property is located on the south side of Tammany Trace, south of US Highway 190 West, west of Silver Road, Ward 9, District 11.
At this time, is there any for or against on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Do I have to hear a motion to postpone? Mr. Doherty?
Yes, motion to postpone for one month. What I understood, Paul.
Thank you. Ms. Robert?
I'd like to second.
Want to second, and on that motion, I call for a vote. Mr. Seager, do you have any comment?
Yes.
Sorry.
Did you open that to the public?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No further comments. Going for a vote.
Motion to postpone for one month carries.
Going on to item number two, Mr. Arsemont?
Agenda two, request to enter the parish right-of-way associated with Maison du Village subdivision. Developer owner, Mid-South Developers LLC, engineer, surveyor, JV Berks and Associates, parish council district representative, Honorable Arthur Logland. General location, the property is located on the south side of Tammany Trace, south of US Highway 190 West, west of Silver Road, Ward 9, District 11.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission. Mr. Seager?
Move to postpone for one month.
Ms. Robert?
I'd like to second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion to postpone for one month carries.
And we're looking at item number eight. Ms. Arsemont?
Agenda item eight, 2022-2903-PP. Maison du Village subdivision, developer owner, Mid-South Developers LLC, engineer, JV Berks and Associates Incorporated, parish council district representative, Honorable Arthur Logland. General location, the property is located west of LA Highway 433, south of US Highway 190, Slidell, Louisiana, Ward 9, District 11. This was postponed at the April 8th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission. Ms. Robert?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone for one month.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Arsemont. Go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion to postpone for one month carries.
This time, we'll move on with our agenda, starting at number three. Ms. Arsemont?
Minor subdivision, item three, 2025-4196MSP. Minor subdivision of 35.63 acres and parcel four into parcels 4A, 4B, 5, 6, and 7. Owners and representatives, 110 Capital Pool, 1 LLC and FJ Investment Properties LLC, Jack J. Menheim. Surveyor, John G. Cummings and Associates, parish council district representative, Honorable Martha J. Kaziban. General location, the property is located on the north side of Bruhl Road and on the northeast and west sides of Loblawli Ridge Drive, future. Folsom S. 19, T. 5S, R. 11E, Ward 2, District 3.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create five parcels from a 35.63 acre parcel and also from parcel four. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as you can see on the table here, the subject property, which is parcel four, has been through the minor subdivision process and requiring the current request to be heard by the planning commission. The proposed name of the public access depicted on the survey shall be granted approval by the planning commission. The proposed name is Lobley Ridge Drive, and it has been submitted and approved by the Saint Tammany Parish Communication District. And is also a request for a waiver to construct a 35-foot access drive and required drainage prior to the building permit being issued on parcel 4A, 4B, 5, 6, and 7, instead of prior to the plot being recorded. And the request shall be subject to items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Thank you, staff. Are you the petitioner?
Hey, good evening, guys. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and commission. My name's Andrew Menheim. I am here on behalf of the applicant, Jack Menheim, who, of course, yes, same last name, he's my father, but for various reasons couldn't be here tonight, and so I was happy to take his place. I'd like to give a brief summary of this proposed project. Of course, what we're proposing tonight with this, with our application essentially amounts to a five-parcel residential development. And I'd like to point out that all of those parcels are larger than the zoning minimum requirements. And now, while it is a five-acre, or five-parcel, rather, development, there's some caveats there. In fact, two of the parcels that are being re-subdivided are already legal lots of record, so it's really only a net increase of lots, if you will, of three. And then additionally, if you'll notice in the materials, there is another minor re-subdivision that's been previously approved, and that says map file 6350C. I've always sort of viewed this minor subdivision with that one as being one project. And so in essence, you have two parcels total of, or two subdivisions with a total of eight parcels. However, all of that to say, tonight before you is a minor subdivision of five parcels, all right? Again, just to summarize, there'll be no new public infrastructure. Private utilities will service the homes. There'll be a private drive that's created along with a maintenance agreement for that drive. And then, of course, I have prepared restrictive covenants to ultimately continue to restrict these properties and parcels in perpetuity, which will further prohibit re-subdivision of these properties. They will prohibit a through road from Chanel Road to Bruhl Road, which, if you recall from a prior public hearing, that was very important to a lot of the community. And then, of course, they'll impose various use restrictions, which should serve to maintain the character of the area. Now, I do acknowledge that because part of this re-subdivision was part of a prior re-subdivision, that that's what triggered the public hearing requirement. Of course, having said that, nevertheless, this project still meets with all of the requirements and all of the criteria of a minor subdivision specifically. It's fewer than five new parcels. There's going to be no public roads being constructed. There's really no real need for engineering requirements. And I think, I think it's accurate to say that one of the largest concerns, if not the largest concern for members of the community and public at large is density, right? Most people just want less density, and I think that this application through this hearing is the most efficient vehicle to achieve that. I guess I'd also like to preemptively address some of the concerns that are typical with projects such as this, starting with drainage and flooding. You'll notice per the application that this is for development of a six-plus, all the way up to a 12-acre-plus property. So again, I believe that with that low of density, that there's less impervious surface and thus less runoff, all right? And additionally, as you all know, when each individual owner ultimately applies for a building permit, there'll be additional drainage analysis and requirements that go along with that. And so it's not as if though we're ignoring drainage, it's just though it's being deferred to a more appropriate time when those, when those plans are actually set forth for development. Number two would be a concern with increased traffic. Again, we're talking about a net increase of really three parcels, and there's restrictive covenants likewise prohibit commercial and multifamily use. So again, I think from a traffic increase perspective, we're talking about something that's really negligible. And then moving on, guys, at the request of this commission at a prior public hearing that I had attended, you guys had suggested that I have a public community meeting with the local areas in this project. And so I did just that, and I got to say that was, that proved to be very helpful. It really was. We had about 10 of us meet at the local coffee shop there in Folsom wherein I presented this proposal and laid out sort of what the idea for the project was. And two main concerns were noted by those residents. Number one, no further subdivision, all right, which I completely understand. Guys, I'm a local to this area as well. This is really essentially right outside my back door, and so I'm likewise interested in less density. And then number two, no through road from Chanel to Bruhl Road, both of which have been addressed in the restrictive covenants, all right? Now, those restrictive covenants are just a draft at this point, but nevertheless, I've submitted those to the members of the, of the, of the public that were at that public meeting for their review and just in an effort to maintain transparency. So in closing, guys, I'd like to reinforce that this project reduces density below the current zoning classification, that there had been community involvement and input, and that it doesn't increase any burden on the public infrastructure. And so with that in mind, I respectfully approve, well, I respectfully request your approval of this, of this application. Thank you.
I don't have anybody, any cards. Does anybody wish to speak against? Seeing none, coming back to the commission. Commissioner Robert?
Yes, I, sorry, this is far away. I don't have any issues with this in general. I guess my question is more one for staff. There is number, note number one, requests shall be subject to the above and below comments. Modify the configuration of the private access servitude to be part of either 4A or 4B. I actually prefer that the access servitude for these properties crosses all of the parcels because it's a private road, the private maintenance agreement. It will force maintenance and the cost of maintenance on that roadway to be shared by all of the property owners rather than putting the burden on just one individual parcel owner. I, it was more of a question for staff. I actually like the configuration better on the survey. So staff, is there a reason that we would require it on one parcel versus on all, all of them?
If you notice, mainly the comment is, you know, the access from Bruhl to the lots 4A and 4B.
Right.
The line comes in the middle, so there shouldn't be any lines, any line in the middle. It should be one straight access. And then, and then it's gonna, it's still gonna provide access to all the lots. It's just that it has to be, it has to be attached to just one parcel, which the minor subdivision requires that the first parcel has direct access to a parish road. So it cannot be split in half, you know, one, half of it going to parcel B, 4A B, and one to 4A. So we're just requesting that the middle line be removed.
Okay, that makes sense.
That, that's, that's just a part of the minor subdivision requirements.
So that, that's what I wanted to make sure of. Mr. Menheim, yeah, if you could, if, for just a moment. So I know you said that the restrictive covenants and there will be a roadway maintenance agreement, so the cost burden of maintaining that roadway, is that going to be a deeded?
It will be.
Requirement, okay.
Absolutely. And in the draft of those restrictions, it's, it's, yes, it would be an obligation shared by parcels. Well, all of them on the, on the subdivision.
All five, yeah.
Yep.
And the other thing I would like to ask, I did see a note on another minor subdivision in our packet tonight, but I noticed the flood zone is not delineated on parcel seven. If you can have Cummings delineate that, there, there is some effective Zone A on that parcel, and whoever builds on that is going to need that anyway.
Yeah, sure. And, and I'm glad that you brought that up. And just briefly, because I did notice the comments, this is in a critical drainage area, that it's in flood zone A. Again, I think we're talking.
It's a small portion of it. I'm not worried about it. It's a small portion. Yeah, I just, I would like it delineated on there, just to stay consistent with what we ask.
Absolutely.
Of all of them. Other than that, I don't have any further questions or comments. I would make a motion to approve. With waivers. If we, no, we don't have waivers, sorry.
Yes, we do.
Oh, with waivers, yes, sorry.
Motion to approve by Ms. Seager, I mean, Ms. Robert, Ms. Arsmont?
I'd like to second with waivers, please.
We have a second with waiver, and I'm being told that we have to have.
Nine.
Nine to approve.
Eight of nine. Eight of nine.
Eight of nine to approve the waiver, just to be clear. With that said, go ahead and cast your vote.
Motion to approve, pass. We have 10.
Moving, moving on to item number four. Ms. Arsmont?
Yes, item number four, 2025-4202MSP. Minor subdivision of five-acre track into Track A and Track B. Owners and representatives, Teresa Henry, surveyor, JV Berks and Associates Incorporated, parish council district representative, Honorable David Kugel. General location, the property is located on the east side of LA Highway 41, south of Earl Bennett Road, Pearl River, S. 22, T. 7, S. R. 14E, Ward 6, District 9.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create two parcels or two tracks from the five-acre parcel to tracks A and B. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to Track B is proposed to be accessed from a 20-foot access servitude and requiring approval from the planning commission, and the request shall be subject to items 1, 2, and 3.
Are you the petitioner?
I'm Teresa Henry.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Teresa, go ahead.
This is my first rodeo. I don't know what I'm supposed to say here.
Kind of what you're trying to do, and what's the purpose behind it?
I actually have five acres, and what I did was I separated one off of it for my grandson. He would like to build a home there. I'd be very proud to have him there. He's a good guy. He'd make a great asset to our, our county here.
Yes, ma'am. Any further comments? Do I have anybody else who would wish to speak for or against in the audience? Seeing none, I turn it back to the commission. Mr. Seager?
I move to approve.
Ms. Arsmont?
Second, please.
Any more comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote.
Motion to approve, pass.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Helen. Thank you, Ms. Erin.
Number five.
Yes, number five, 2025-4224MSP. Minor subdivision of parcels A1 and B1 into parcel A1A. Owners and representatives, Thad W. Divier, Divier if I'm saying it wrong, and Catherine Williams Divier, surveyor Kelly J. McHugh and Associates Incorporated, council district representative, Honorable Rick Smith. General location, the property is located on the south side of Brewster Road, west of Fair Oaks Lane, Covington, S. 14, T. 7S, R. 10E, Ward 1, District 1.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create one parcel from parcels A1 and B1 into parcel A1A. And the minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as you can see here on the table, the subject property has been through the minor subdivision, thus requiring the request to be heard in front of the planning commission. As you can see, in 2008, there was a request to create two parcels, and now the owner is coming back to just combine the two parcels into one to make it just a larger parcel, and it should be subject to items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
All right, is the petitioner here? Yes, sir.
Hi, Thad Divier, just trying to combine the lot into one for residents, single residents.
Sounds good. Anybody else would like to speak for or against in the audience? Seeing none, I bring it back to the commissioner, Ms. Robert?
I don't have any issues with this. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Ms. Arsmont?
A second, please. Second, please.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote.
Love less density.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to number six?
Yes, number six.
Oops, sorry.
Yes, number six, 2025-4205TP. Beetaco Creek subdivision, parcel one, developer owner, Beetaco Creek Preserve LLC, engineer, surveyor, Kelly McHugh and Associates Incorporated, parish council district representative, the Honorable Kathy Seddon. General location, the property is located on the northwest side of LA Highway 1085, south of Interstate 12, Madisonville, Louisiana, Ward 1, District 4.
Staff? Oops, sorry. Request to speak, oh, there we go.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
Sorry about that. The concept plans and documentation have been reviewed by this office, and an inspection was made of the site on April 28th, 2025. The concept approval will be subject to the following informational items and comments, numbers one through two being completed and addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a lot of cards for you. Is a petitioner here?
Sorry, yes. So thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Paul Marone, on behalf of Beetaco Creek Preserve LLC, Beetaco interests. So this is what was the commercial parcel. If you'll recall, I appeared before you several months ago now, I think it was a month or two, where we converted what was parcel one, which was a commercial parcel, to a residential parcel. We're here with a layout of that, of that parcel. We have reviewed all of the staff's comments, and we can, and will comply with each of those. There were a number of items that, that were on the staff, staff's list. Most of those items were relatively minor. Correcting some verbiage, adding a few things, making things consistent, all of which our engineer can handle. With regards to the utility letters, we are aware that we need those. We have requested those. A little bit unique on this subdivision in that the sewer treatment is actually serviced out of Tangiers-Bahoah Parish. So there's a tri-party agreement between the developer, Saint Tammany Parish, who handles the water, and keeps up some of the sewer infrastructure, and then Tangiers-Bahoah Parish, who actually treats the sewer. So a few more moving parts than we typically have, but, but there is capacity, water and sewer there, and we do expect to have those letters shortly. Some of the residents from Beetaco are here, and, and I was just speaking with them, and there is a concern that they have about a golf cart or a walking path that traversed this area. If you look close at the map, if you have the larger version, you may be able to see it. It's a little hard to see it on the small version. That, that path, as currently constructed, goes sort of through the middle of this, this development. And what you will see is that the proposal was to relocate the path, but to continue with the path through the development. Essentially, you would come in from the west side between some lots. You would then get on the street and then be able to pick up on the path on the east side, and then take it north and then cross the boulevard. There was some concern, and you'll, you'll hear some of that tonight, about the portion of the path going through the development and along the street, and a desire that, that we find a route to keep the path, but keep it outside of the street. And talking with Mr. McHugh, who's the engineer, there is a possibility that we could run that path around the, the, the south side of the lots, between the lots and the pond, and come back and loop around to tie back in to the, to the existing path so that it wouldn't run through the streets. I can't commit to you this evening that we can do that. What I can do is commit to you that we will absolutely look into that. We will discuss it with the developer, have the engineer look at it more carefully to make sure there's room and the ability to do that. And we have to come back to you for what used to be preliminary, different term now, but we've got to come back to you one more time for the engineering that, that would then allow us to get a work order. At that time, we will address, we would propose to address this issue. If we're going to move it, we'll move it at, at that time. I guess my point in saying all this is that I want to be clear on the record that there is this issue. We're aware of this issue, and even if it is the, the will of the commission to approve the plan tonight, I'd like you to keep the location of the path open, not lock it in as we have it so that we have the opportunity to see if, in fact, we can do what the residents are asking and have it loop around the outside and the south side and not go through the new street. With that being said, we'd ask for your consideration this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time, and I thank you.
We have a relatively large number of people who want to speak. We're going to give you about two minutes each just to, and we'll make that time up in the rebuttal for Mr. Marone and on the back end. So to begin with, we're going to go with Lori Kilgore. Are there any other four, this?
Good evening. I've never come to one of these meetings, and unfortunately, I tried to come to the last one. As a resident for five years of Beetaco Creek, we absolutely love our subdivision because of the amenities that they have. Those amenities have shrunk in portion from green space, multiple subdivisions being built. And while this one was on the map to be commercial, and it was, there was a vote sent out to all the homeowners, I don't know who conducted the vote, but we never really got to understand. Every single neighbor that I've talked to had wanted to keep it commercial. So, as a resident, I'm just concerned about that initial. Moving this property over to residential versus commercial was one concern. How did it happen if we weren't at the meeting? It seems like there should have been another way to get the voice of the citizens. Another thing, I understand growth is inedible. Profit at the cost of our standard of living should not be an option. So, you know, I feel like they're robbing Peter to pay Paul. You know, we're taking away our amenities that we have been there, that we enjoy on a daily basis, as well as the structure of some of the properties that this will affect. There's a whole street that backs up to this area, that it will change the course of their yards being, you know, becoming detention ponds and such. So, there's just a lot of concern with this, and we feel like this was supposed to be, when it was originally proposed as residential, that it was going to be one simple street. It seems like it's going to be a little bit more than that, and again, the profit seems to be the goal, and that as a resident has concerns to our standard of living. And I'm a person who does walk the path every day. It would be unheard of to have to walk through the middle of a street, would be kind of ridiculous. Thank you.
Next one is Rachel Calonato. Catalano, not.
Catalonato, you said it right.
Oh, gotcha.
Good evening, I'm here to request a postponement of this for at least one month and to ask for a meeting with the residents. The notice for this meeting is actually laying in a traffic circle, which I have a picture. It was not upright for people to know, and the reason why you have so many people here tonight is because it was posted on Facebook immediately before, along with the plan. The signage for the original April 1 meeting is still up in the location. This was posted in a traffic circle, which is not the location of the spot. So, I'm asking for it to be reposted, for the residents to have notice of it, and for there to be a community meeting, because if in that vote that was given to us, it was told that we were losing our golf cart and walking path, you would have had a lot of opposition here to the rezoning change. I really truly believe that. So, I understand that they're looking at maybe potentially making a concession and changing the route, but that's not guaranteed tonight. So, I'd like for you to postpone it so that we can look at that and try to work on that with the developer, to make sure that we do not lose these amenities that we bought into. When we bought into Beetaco Creek, and it's still on their website, 3.5 miles of golf cart, walking, and hiking paths. We're losing a significant portion of that with this plan. So, we ask for more input from the community, from the residents, and we ask more time for it to be reviewed. So, I'm asking for a postponement. Thank you.
Mr. Jesse Henry.
So, first off, I'm totally against this new development. With all due respect to the gentleman who's representing the developer, my concern is, one of my last concerns is actually the cart path. If you look at the drawings, the fourth lot on that drawing is my backyard that would back up to a retention pond. So, my wife and I bought this property and built a home there just over 10 years ago. And I've done my best not to get too involved. There's been an uproar and there's a frenzy against the developer in my neighborhood for quite some time. I've done my best not to get too involved in that, but now this has become almost comical. The bait and switch that's gone on in this neighborhood over the last 10 years is ridiculous. And I think you guys, at this point, owe lots of responsibility to step in and hold these guys accountable. If you look at the past drawings of what was supposed to be developed in this neighborhood versus what was not, we're so far past that at this point. This area that's being developed, proposed now, is my backyard, green space, old fairway, never to be touched, a golf cart path, and then Beetaco Creek. It floods like crazy. I could send you guys some images, drone shots in my house, almost 18 feet above sea level. Over three times, I've had water up to my foundation. You're going to develop this? This is, it's really a joke. And I mean, I don't know what you guys' kind of role is in this, but I would say just use some common sense and take a look at where they're proposing this. Not to mention, there was a survey. I challenged the results of that survey, for sure. I can't find more than five people in my neighborhood that claim to vote for this to be changed to residential. We know that commercial would have never happened. There's no chance a commercial development would have ever taken place there. So, we wanted a commercial so it would never be developed. And then, the drawings at that time that they showed as to what would potentially be developed as residential, you look at it compared to what's now, is double now. So, people who did vote for it, didn't vote for this.
Gotcha.
Thank you, thank you for your input.
Ms. Ellen Manuel.
Good evening, council. My name is Ellen Manuel, I'm a resident of Beetaco Creek. I moved there about four years ago because it had beautiful, open spaces. I have two beautiful children that I need to get off a tablet. I get them outside almost every day. We take the golf cart path every day. They ride their bikes, it's safe for them. I'm so upset about this space being taken away from my children, from our community. He says he's going to move a path, but the reality is, is you're taking all that green space. People play in that green space, people use it for other areas. When he talked about moving this parcel and changing it from commercial, it was a much, if you look at where it actually changed, this does not sit in it. What y'all changed in the last meeting does not sit, this overlaps. A new area, another area that the developer owns. The developer does not live here, he does not live in that neighborhood. We live in that neighborhood. We live in St. Tammany. I would like for this council to think about your people and the people that live here, and not this man's bottom dollar. And that is what I ask for you to look at. I second that I think a community meeting would be beneficial, because I was the one that posted this morning on Facebook, because I had never seen anything. And there are a lot of people that could not make this meeting tonight, that would have liked to have made this meeting. So, I would also ask that you postpone any decision on this. I'm not going to waste any more of your time, though. Thank you.
It's never a waste. Mr. Glenn Gross.
Hey, good evening. So, I was at the last meeting, and Ms. Robert had actually asked for a community meeting, but then ended up changing her mind, because Mr. Marone came up here and he had a rebuttal, and he said something along the lines that there was never anything in the email that said anything about gas stations or anything like that. Well, I have the email right here, and it clearly says, permitted uses, retail office, ends duplexes, churches, schools, convenience store with gas. So, therefore, her, you know, her opinion changed when that happened, because he lied. He came up and bold-faced lied to you guys. And so, how are we supposed to believe anything he says when he says, "Oh, we're going to move the cart path, or we're not going to do this, or we're going to do that"? You can't. And then, like everyone else was saying, the new part of the neighborhood, the new map that we got today is double the size of what they show actually on the email. Because on the email, again, has a picture of it. It has future development with two X's on it, still has the cart path, still has the green space right next to it. Everyone uses this green space, it's a beautiful green space. When you pull in the neighborhood, you look to the left, it's the most beautiful part of the neighborhood, actually. You know, you look over there, it's nice and hilly, it's cut nice, it's green. It's the best-looking green space, because as soon as you get a little bit further past that in the neighborhood, all the green spaces look like crap. You know, they're not kept up, there's big ruts on the side of the road, but that one there is beautiful. And now, they're talking about, and then on every map, I just looked at every map on the way here that came back from, since I've been in the neighborhood for eight years. Every single one of them has that as green space with a cart path. Nowhere does it say future development, nowhere does it say anything. In fact, I have the one that says, "Commercial offices, garden offices, cart path, green space." It's there, it's plain as day. So, let them lie to you some more, or don't.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Marone, rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Narcisse. A couple of points. You know, again, this area was slated for commercial. The commercial parcel that we got rid of was larger than the residential parcel that we're proposing to develop. To suggest that we're adding or taking away green space, there is more green space in the development as a result of converting the commercial to residential, because the commercial parcel was larger. Over the life of this project, there is more green space that has been added, not less from the original approval. There are less lots than was originally approved, except with the conversion from the commercial. With regards to the postponement, certainly I respect anything that the commission may decide to do. I would point out that there is another public hearing. We have another step in the process before anything could happen out there. If there's a desire to have a public or a community meeting, there would be time between this meeting and that meeting to do that. So, I'd ask you to consider that. With regards to the gentleman that was concerned about the pond behind his house, that pond is not needed. That was originally something that our engineer thought we would need, but we do not need that pond. The only pond that we will have will be the pond that is south of the proposed developed lots in the creek. The pond over to the east, I believe, or the west, excuse me, that was causing the concern is not going to be part of the project. We're not going to have to construct that pond. So, I wanted to make sure and point that out. With regards to the gas station issue, I will only say about that, that after that last meeting, I did have an opportunity to go back and look at the specific permitted uses that were included in the PUD when the PUD was approved. The language the gentleman just read to you comes exactly out of that PUD approval. Those were approved uses when the PUD was approved. I said I wasn't aware that they were in the email. I was mistaken about that, I wasn't lying to you. Those uses were absolutely permitted, and I'm happy to produce the document, if you need it, to see it, that tracks that exact language. So, I regret that I didn't realize the language was in the email, but I certainly respectfully disagree that I lied to the commission or that I would lie to the commission. So, again, you know, we're taking a piece of what was commercial property. It's, the use has already been decided. It is a residential parcel now. There is larger green space than there was, more green space in the development after this approval than there was before. And we're talking about 24 lots, and we're happy to work on the location of the cart path. We respect that concern, and I'm hopeful, cannot guarantee it, but I'm hopeful that we can address that so that it is better going forward and that we can loop it around the south side of the development. So, I ask for your consideration this evening to the request.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have three minutes in totality for the rebuttal from the residents. So, three minutes, you got to share the time.
This is the map that I received when I bought my lot, and you can clearly see there's a future development underneath, backed off of the cart path. The development that they're proposing now, it goes over and beyond. So, this is what we are sold, and then today, we're expected to just go, "Oh, okay. How is more houses going to make more green space? I don't understand that." So, I have this, if anybody wants to see it, I gladly leave it for you.
Hello, my name is Joey Liberto, I'm a resident of Beetaco Creek as well. My first question is, is what kind of flood survey was conducted? Because if you've ever been in the neighborhood during a heavy rainstorm, you'd see that area is back up pretty quickly, and more development. Does not seem like that's going to address that issue. Another problem is, is if you've ever been on 1085 in the morning or through that roundabout, you can tell there's a severe amount of traffic, so much traffic, so that even in the afternoons, it backs up on the interstate. I-12 is already a dangerous interstate as it is, yet we have so much traffic in that area that it backs up literally to the interstate now. But here we are wanting to do more development for more homes. There's also another neighborhood popping up on 1085 just south of 12th right now that's going to bring in, I don't know, maybe somewhere around 50 or plus homes. It's just going to increase traffic. It's already very, it's already dangerous trying to leave that neighborhood, and, you know, all we're doing is bringing more residents into that area. What is the parish planning on doing to address the therefore, lack of infrastructure to support this development as well? That's my, you know, that's, on top of it, first thing I'd like to say is, I don't agree with the development, and also I share the same exact sentiment with the rest of my residents as well. And then I have neighbors who are not here that I spoke to, and I'm speaking for at least five different families that live right around me as well. We all share the same sentiment. So, even though I'm one individual, another, there's many people who share that same idea.
Anybody else wish to speak in rebuttal?
And I would like to know, what are the plans to address the traffic issues?
Okay, so they're talking about, we're getting more green space. On the, before you get in the neighborhood, on the opposite, on the outside of the fence, they cleared near the creek, it's like just brush and trees and no grass and just funky green space. That's the additional green space that they're saying they're giving us. So, they're taking away nice plush-developed green space to give us green space that nobody's going to use on the outside of the fence, that's next to a creek with a tree that's fallen over in the middle of it, that they go out there and have a picnic, is what they said on the email, but like, nobody's going to have a picnic. People picnic where they're trying to get rid of. That and the vote. Our covenants or whatever, we all have one vote, they have 1,000 votes. If we all voted, we wouldn't have enough votes to outvote them. So, if they talk about a vote, if they didn't have the vote, they just made it up on their vote. I guarantee you. Show the vote, show it. Who voted? Is it, was it people in the neighborhood, or was it part of Walter Matt's 1,000 votes?
Thank you. All right, we're past the comment section, we're going to bring it back to the commission, Ms. Robert.
Okay, first, I would like to address, I did take back my motion last month to postpone. However, the reason I did that, I do an inordinate amount of research in every single case that comes in front of us. I mean, hours, especially on subdivision plots. The one thing I can't account for, though, is the fact that another commissioner actually lives in this subdivision, and he was, is not here tonight, but he was here last month. I had no clue that Commissioner Truck Silo lives in Beetaco Creek. So, I am always going to defer to another commissioner who actually lives in that subdivision, in this area, because they are the best expert on what actually goes on, and what the residents hear, what they talk about, what you guys are being told. So, that is always going to be the first thing. So, I do apologize if it came off as me being scared off, but Truck Silo lives there. He's not here tonight, so that's the first thing. Second, I was actually going to request postponement simply because I do an inordinate amount of research, and I've had a week to review this, and I did not receive a large plot of this, so it was very difficult to read. And I wanted to compare the different versions of this PUD through the years, because it seems as though things have changed, as they do with PUDs. So, I was going to request postponement regardless, so we could have a little bit more time to take a closer look. And now I see that it looks like that is in the best interest of everyone, so I would like to make a motion to postpone for one month.
We got a motion to postpone? We got a motion to postpone, Mr. Seager.
I'll second that motion.
We got a second by Mr. Seager, Ms. Martino.
All right. Nothing to add to that.
Ten-four. All right, we got a motion and a second. No further discussion, please vote. To postpone, yes, sir.
Motion to postpone for one month, Carries.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to?
Oops, sorry, go ahead.
There was a request for a community meeting. Are you, would you like to set up a community meeting with the planning and zoning commissioners?
Yes, that'd be probably the most favorable thing to do, yes.
Okay.
So, do we need to schedule that date now, or can we just do it through email and other means?
Well, I will have to check the availability of this room. However, everyone who's filled out a card will make sure to let you know by email also. But at this time, I think you should probably establish the group or who you would like to appoint to attend that community meeting. or who you would like to appoint to attend that community meeting. I will, I will do my best to have a date available as soon as possible. I know it's important to all. And if you don't hear back from me yet relatively before the end of the week, feel free to call or email me. But we will schedule that as soon as possible.
I know for me it'll be depending on a date, so I think that's going to be the best for the commissioners as well to get that date in time so we can lay it down.
So usually we have the the third Tuesday of the month that is usually available, which would be the 20th, which would be next Tuesday. I will try to do my best to have this date available. So if if you want to establish, appoint some members who would be available.
The 20th at 6?
Yes.
I will, I can be there. Anybody else? So that's, and I would say Mr. Truckzillo, he's going to be voluntold if he's available because he lives there.
I would like to be there, but I'm not sure I will be the ASFP conference.
We can only have five. We got Mr. Walker, we got Mr. Truckzillo, Ms. Milligan and myself. That's four. All right, so we have enough there if you want to get the names down.
Okay, let me, we'll just check in if, to see if we can see the schedule on the wall here. Okay, so at this time, we don't have access to the schedule, but I will do my best to contact y'all, you know, by email. And as I said, if you didn't hear back from me, feel free to email me or or call me. My email address is h lambert at stpgov.org or planning at stpgov.org. I know probably many of you already have my email address, but feel free to contact us.
All righty, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, Mr. Renner. Ms. Arsm, oh, there we go, we might need that.
Item number seven, final plat and construction plans approval. Item seven, 2025, 4143 PP, Brewster Place subdivision. Developer owner, Center Fire LLC. Engineer Surveyor, JV Burks and Associates Incorporated. Parish Council District Representative, the Honorable Kathy Seddon. General location, the property is located on the west of Dummy Line Road, south of Brusel Road, west of LA Highway 1077, south of Interstate 12, Madisonville, Louisiana, Ward 1, District 4. Please note postponed at the April 8, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Staff.
Good evening. My name is John Campo.
Just, we're going to go to staff first.
I'll wait until the staff.
Yes, sir. The final plat and construction subdivision plans and the drainage impact study have been reviewed by this office and an inspection was made of the site on April 28, 2025. Final plat and construction subdivision plans approval of this case shall be subject to developer complying with comments numbers one through eight and all informational items below and no work order to be issued until all required items are satisfactorily completed and submitted. Additionally, a funded maintenance obligation in the amount of $20,000 is required in accordance with St. Tammany Parish Code of Ordinance, Chapter 800. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Campo. I've been a resident of St. Tammany Parish since 1988. Raised our children and have several grandchildren here and have enjoyed being in such a beautiful environment. I'm an architect by profession, 42 years in practice, but I'm a preservationist also. I say that because as we took took an approach to this project, it was with preservation in mind. This is a site that is, quite frankly, is beautiful. And our approach is to not go in and mow down all of the trees that are there. In fact, it's just the opposite. So I wanted to just set the stage with what our, where our heart is and what our intent is with respect to maintaining as much as we can of the beauty of the site. I have Sean Burks with me tonight. He's our civil engineer of record and owner of JV Burks. He'll be here to answer any of the technical questions. As I said, I'm an architect. I'm not a civil engineer. So a lot of this stuff is really, he's the subject matter expert. This project has gone through several design iterations and was submitted for the April meeting. And Sean was asked by the planning commission staff for a meeting with me to discuss their desire to have another redesign. And so we pulled it from the April meeting. I went into that meeting with a very open mind. I will tell you that the staff, Theodore, Aaron, Maria, Helen are incredible. It was a great meeting and really we collaborated on how this particular subdivision could conform with the upcoming new regulations. And so there was some give and take there. I was intrigued with their design principles, their sensitivity to the site. And essentially what is, I think forthcoming is a performance-based code. As an architect, we we practice in 20-plus states. We see an awful lot of performance-based codes for buildings that range from saving historic buildings to energy efficiency. So I'm very familiar with it, but in this case, it was more of an environmental performance-based design. It's my understanding that this is going to be the first project in the parish that will be designed with the new planning guidelines and it's really intended to promote sensitive and responsible environmental design that I think will improve the future residential developments in the parish. So I'm kind of happy to be the point man here. The design takes into consideration a 25-foot buffer that preserves some magnificent live oak trees that are on the front of the property. They are 70-inch caliber plus and other trees that essentially will benefit the property by preserving them. But also it leads to the opportunity for different lot sizes. The, there's another incentive there that in the retention pond, there'll be trees planted in the retention pond that'll be cypress trees. They're conducive, obviously, to a lot of water. And that's another incentive that is in the performance-based guidelines that are forthcoming. The the third item is a sidewalk that is going to be on the main street that is not required, but it's something that is part of the good design principles of the forthcoming standards. So we are agreeing to really all of the items that staff had recommended. So essentially, the project conforms to all of the design guidelines. If you notice, there are three waivers in there and the reason they're waivers is, I believe next month is when they're going to be voted on and formally approved. So in order for us to present tonight, they're shown as waivers, but they actually are born within the guidelines that the staff had recommended to us. I did want to note that there was give and take. And so part of the give was, we reduced the number of lots that had previously been proposed from 18 to 17. So again, there was a lot of work that, nobody walked away with everything that they wanted. I guess that's the result of a good negotiation. So really, that's, that's the, you know, the summary of the project. We we're here to answer your questions. And with respect to technical questions, I will defer to Sean. So thank you.
All right, we're going to go into the people who speak against. I have two cards that do not speak to, wish to speak, but I do have Matthew. Yeah, those are two. And then Mr. Burks will come up if he wanted to, but he did not. Mr. Matthew Caprell.
Good evening. So I initially thought we had 10 minutes, so I have put together.
You have two minutes apiece?
Two minutes apiece, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a lot to unpack here. They didn't even have all of this in here. But basically what was just said, being a preservationist, there's two live oaks on the front of this property. There's a couple in the back that they're saving. Going into the the actual part of this, last year we were here, March 2024, and this commission heard us and they actually denied the developer the right to move to the tentative phase. We were actually, we had a council meeting in May of last year. And during during that, the council told us we technically won both here and at the council. However, we were too early in the process to fight it. They stated that the developer had a legal right to proceed. And I still to this day don't know what the point of having the ability to argue pre-tentative phase even is if if things can't be reversed. So I ask you, what, how do you define winning a legal right? What is the point of having us here in those phases? And what, what is the point if the show must go on, even if the points are valid, to declare somebody a victor within a hearing? It doesn't help that a commissioner on this board actually told us that once the ball is rolling, it's very difficult to stop. So I ask, how do we stop it? We need to put an end to this subdivision and reconsider both the zoning and development plans of the subdivision. And we actually have a lot more prep than we did last year. We have a bunch of exhibits and stuff that I'll share at the end of this. Getting into the development side of this, they're going to tell you everything is in order and everything is is good to go and their numbers don't lie. But I ask to consider the concept of engineering theory and what what it means to be theoretical. Why did, why do both this commission and other members of the council continue to make concurring statements when they have people come up here, thousands before us? Beadaco was a great example here. And and agree that there are a tremendous, there's been a tremendous increase in flooding and traffic and school population issues. And, you know, basically all these developments that follow these processes that we just had to continue on and carry down the line. Clearly doesn't work. It's clearly theoretical and continuing to populate our area before building more infrastructure needs to stop. This is a relatively small subdivision, I understand that. But I feel like this is, we had to speak up and have our opportunity to ask this board to consider making an example, setting some example that we are going to start focusing on infrastructure before development. With that being said, I want to touch on some of the risk here and some of the things that we've seen with these plans. There is drainage risk. The developer and their plan stated the Fairfield Oaks plans were supposed to drain from backyards to the front, but they admit that they did not. Our neighborhood was built in like 97 to 01. So in the plans, the developer actually, you know, said our plans originally, said we're supposed to drain from backyard to front, but they noted that we actually don't. We drain into their lot. It's not their fault. It's obviously an issue and that's why we have standing water in our backyard. But the plans they have are supposed to account for 25% runoff decrease in our adjacent neighborhoods. But yet, the developer also states in the plans that we got through a public records request that they will be using and relying on Fairfield Oaks retention pond in the back for their overflow servitude where their pond is not able to withstand water. I don't understand how that works because if it supposedly runs downhill and you have to rely on that, well, obviously it's going to be backed up and ours is going to be flooded. So essentially, our neighborhood is their backup plan. The numbers in the hydrological report they used for our subdivision are from 1997. They used an outdated AutoCAD version, HydroCAD. Since that came out, they've had advanced rainfall management tools, multi-storm event simulations added, improved calculation accuracies. The report also states our drainage flows south to Spring Haven. This is incredible. The exhibits I brought tell a completely different story. You can go on LSU Flood Maps and track down the line what it looks like. It's actually an uphill downhill kind of slope. They said that was 40 feet wide in a servitude.
Your time has elapsed if anybody, that was the four minutes.
It goes pretty quick, doesn't it?
It does.
I still have a couple more things to address, but there's, there's all kinds of things in here.
You can come back on the rebuttal side or somebody else.
I can knock it out in two minutes, by the way. I'll make sure I shorten it.
Yeah, we have two more cards. We want to make sure they have a voice as well. Mr. Troy Labont. Yes, both of you?
Yes.
Are you Raylene? You're Raylene? You're Raylene, I'm assuming? I have a Raylene Avocat. You want to defer your time as well? All right, so we'll give you four minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so the plans for the detention pond have actually changed between February 10 and April 25 of this year. They decreased the depth by two feet and we're not even sure if that's considered in the final numbers of the hydrological report right now. We have photos and elevations of the proclaimed 40-foot drainage, which they they say runs to the back of our property. I have, it's about 5 to 10 feet wide. It's about two to three feet deep. It floods up into the backyards of our neighbors all the time, including our own property. So actually, this Friday, this last Friday, I have pictures of both my backyard pooled up rain coming about six feet up the yard, seven feet. And then we actually drove down Brewster and right where that drainage ditch, the pre-existing drainage ditch comes out and and flows onto Brewster, it was flooded about eight to 10 inches of water. We had to drive through. So the miscalculations result in an underestimation of total water flow and compound drainage effects where this proposed runoff will be. And then I have to ask, how do you possibly state that we'll have 25% less water while needing to use a supposedly lower retention area as a backup plan? Lastly, the flood maps continue, we brought this point up last year, to be used from 1989. As you can imagine, a lot has happened. It's not, it's not the case anymore. So I don't know if that's been updated to, I think, 2011 or something like that. But in any case, they're not up to date with the hundreds of homes, the the multiple dozens of subdivisions we've added in this area. And this includes Spring Haven behind us. That was built 10 years ago. So going into traffic risk, this area, being 17 homes, didn't meet requirements for traffic study, a traffic study to need to be conducted. Yet every weekday, morning, afternoon, you're guaranteed to encounter 15 to 20 minutes of traffic on Brewster and 1077, 1077 heading north to the roundabout they talked about, backed up on the 12. Brewster and Paraloo has Lancaster Elementary. It's a bus route. The Dummy Line Galatus is Madisonville Elementary pickup and drop-off route. So at 3:30, you actually get stuck on Dummy Line. There's no going around anybody. You're trapped in the traffic whether you have a kid there or not. In Brewster, Oak Park, Brewster and 1085 are getting even worse now because we put in a four-way stop sign at 1085 and 22. So people tend to reroute up Oak Park and 1085 down Brewster. Most neighborhoods here in recent years also didn't drive or need for, have a need for traffic studies because they're also less than 25 homes. And Brewster is narrow, no shoulders, no turnarounds. We're constantly seeing cars in ditches. And just adding 17 more cars to this is unnecessary and we can't really handle it. General concerns about the plants. There are 42 comments from the parish as of 5/6, as of May 6, that were on the drawing plans. We don't know if there's been addressed prior to this meeting. There's communication between the developer and Councilwoman Seddon before March, between March and April, discussing possibly moving to the UDC. We found out that they now did that. The problem is, is that since then or prior to then, they did all this stuff in the, in both the zoning, the preliminary plans. They had the the reports done during the tentative phase. But those all predate this agreement that occurred in April. So there are things that don't align and I feel like if you are getting bonuses for, or incentives for switching over to the new UDC, you should also have to predate that with previous prior parts of this process that we're we're talking about. Speaking of zoning, in 2020, during the peak of COVID, this this lot was rezoned from A3 to A4 and our councilwoman in District 4 actually didn't even know that. She was actually shocked by that. Across the lot, there's another seven-acre parcel that was split. They got seven. Three houses are on the other seven because it's an A3 and it looks beautiful and that's the way we want to keep our area due to all these other things that were going on. So there are other items and elaborate, elaborate stuff I can get into. I have all the evidence and the exhibits that I wanted to share. So the process they had is a quote "legal right to follow" and it's been followed by every other single development in the parish over the last however many years and it continues to result in increased flooding, traffic, school overpopulation and even crime. Where and when to consider that process may need to be improved and I'll leave you with that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You have three minutes for rebuttal.
I'll ask Sean to pass some drawings around for you folks to view. As he's doing that, I want to talk about the traffic. Traffic impact analysis because this is such a small development, it's not required. It never was required, never has been. So we didn't do that. It's our understanding that the traffic impact is minimal with 17 sites. With respect to the flooding, I listened at the last meeting when there were conversations about adding and flooding our neighbor Fairfield Oaks. So I asked Sean to do some homework. Sean went and looked at the records from when the subdivision Fairfield Oaks was originally designed and built. The way it was designed is the water would be coming from the rear of their property to their roads. He found an as-built drawing that showed just the opposite. Where on our property line, on the eastern property line and on the south property line, the existing Fairfield Oaks subdivision actually sheds water onto my property. I wanted to make sure that that was correct and so I didn't want to just rely on as-builds. I asked Sean to spend a little extra money and do a drone LiDAR, which is a highly accurate method of looking at elevations. It's It's, it's accurate to within an eighth of an inch. What you have before you is the results of that LiDAR. If you look at the red color and the arrows, you'll see that Fairfield Oaks, as it surrounds my property, is higher and it sheds water onto my property. It's an existing non-conforming use. So I had a decision to make, did I want to be a good neighbor or not? The answer is I want to be a good neighbor. Our design shows a 25-foot drainage servitude on that property line. It wraps the subdivision and goes all the way back around to the western side existing drainage ditch. I gave up 25 feet of the entire L portion of the property so that not only could we take into consideration and comply to the letter of the code with our property, but an additional three acres of property that is adjacent to us that we don't own. I didn't want to fight. I wanted to make it good, make it easy, resolve the issue of drainage for an existing non-conforming use as well as our property. And so what you have before you is not what I think or I feel, that's accurate data. Really, that's the gist of it, is I've listened, I've taken into consideration what our neighbors have complained about, they have every right to do so. What you have before you is something that is solely at our expense. We don't want anything from anybody, we just want to be good neighbors. We gave up one lot, and we, we have satisfied and solved the problem that is both ours and our neighbors. Thank you.
Three minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, so going back to touch it on the entire Fairfield Oaks subdivision being part of the hydro study, that, that predated the UDC requirement for 100-year plan, and that's not even calculated properly in terms of what that requirement needs to be. So it's hard to say that they comply with anything if they have just a perfect example of not even having the information. I believe LiDAR was required, but it was done like, part of the, this, this meeting that we had previously, it was asked, it was requested to do, so it wasn't out of like, you know, kindness. The 25-foot drainage servitude that they have there, it doesn't account for the fact that we're on six-inch slabs. It doesn't account for the mismatch in grading throughout everything that you see on a flood map throughout that entire property. And then the fact that they have a one-foot fill and a 12-inch foundation limitation now, they can absolutely build up higher. So when you consider that, and they also stated that they want to drain their overflow if this pond should flood into our pond behind us, into what is our retention, it tells me that there's obviously risk, that they know it could flood, and then they're relying on us, even though they're saying it's reducing our, our water rates. I don't understand how that's possible. And that being said, I, I want to ask, you know, if, if we're so confident in all these plans, and you hurt our risk today, would the developer stand behind that in a written agreement to say if anything happens to our properties after this development's built, that they'd be held liable for it? I, I would appreciate that in a contract form, and I think my, my concerns would actually be a lot more, a lot, you know, more mitigated. So, thank you again.
You got a minute left?
We have a minute left to rebuttal. Anybody else would like to speak?
Yeah, I think that he's covered most of what we needed to say. I, I think I just want to reiterate the fact that everything sounds great because, oh, these.
Can we get your name and address for the record? I'm sorry.
Fallon Caprell. That's it, yeah. So I live in Fairfield Oaks, sorry, that's what you were asking. Everything sounds great, but as we've seen before, every one of these developments has passed these tests and it hasn't worked out yet. There's this new code and that's super exciting, but 17 houses, y'all, 17 houses in such a small area now, we're, look, we're literally now making, we're putting a retention pond. So I mean, why can't it be something like the other side? They're doing, they're thriving on the other side of the power lines where they have the three houses. 17, you know, Kir Lane is another great example of this. They were supposed to develop a neighborhood too with small lots. And luckily for them, for that side of Brewster, there's, there was a moratorium, and they weren't able to do it as small lots as they wanted. But guess what? They did it, they did it fabulously with, I think it's like six lots or something, and they still made money and everyone's still happy, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've passed the public comment portion, and we're going to bring you back to the commission, Ms. Robert.
Get comfy, boys. All right, I'd first like to address, so common misconception in St. Tammany Parish. You use the LSU Ag map?
Yeah.
Okay, you have to toggle the layers. So there's an effective firm, which is flood insurance rate map, and there's preliminary firm. St. Tammany has only adopted the effective firm, which are those 1988, 87, 89 firm panels. Right before Hurricane Katrina, FEMA came in and did a full-blown FIS of the entire parish, but what happened after Katrina? This parish exploded in population. So all of the flood insurance studies that came out in 2008 were literally out of date and basically like, the landscape and topography of the entire parish changed within Ross. What was the timeline? We reached our, our goal, our estimated growth?
Five.
Yeah, it was like a 35-year growth period. We met that mark within five years after Hurricane Katrina. So the way this works in St. Tammany, your effective firm, the old panels are only basically for your flood insurance. So if you're in a C-zone, that doesn't really exist on the preliminary, the newer flood maps. So St. Tammany uses the preliminary firm, which are those newer models, the newer flood insurance study from 2008, for engineering, base flood elevation purposes. So the BFEs are historically higher, gives you a better, better estimation of what the true flooding potential is for a property. So old firm, CBA, that is literally only for your flood insurance for your residents. Whereas the preliminary flood maps are used for everything else, for mitigation calculations or compensatory storage, whatever you would call it. So that's the first thing.
Can I just ask, are the elevations accurate though?
No, this is not a given.
I'm sorry, so elevations on base flood elevation, we have a higher standard with a one-foot freeboard ordinance parish-wide, and you, this property is actually not in a flood zone on the effective or the preliminary flood insurance rate maps. This property is free and clear, it's in CNX completely. I understand that there are drainage concerns, however Fairfield Oaks was built, as you stated, what, 97, 98, 2001? So that not only predates our, our preliminary flood insurance rate maps, that is, they weren't even around when Fairfield Oaks was built. So the homes that are in there, if they were destroyed tomorrow, if one of them burned down to rebuild, you'd have, actually have to build to a higher elevation if that property is in a flood, flood zone, because the newer maps have higher base flood elevations. So it is a better way to look at it. So your rate would say one thing on your flood insurance premium, but most people handle that different ways. So I actually had other concerns, not necessarily concerns, I had about 1,000 questions. Mr. Marrone, I'm sorry that Beeta Cove Creek got postponed that. I spent more time and hours looking into this one than I can count, so. Here we go. So I do have a few questions. First, when was this LiDAR drone footage done?
It was done probably within the last.
Please, please come to the podium.
My name is Sean Burks with JV Burks and Associates. We flew it, it was probably about two months ago.
Okay, okay, thank you. First, I wanted, second, I did want to address one comment that you had. So part of the reason for the Unified Development Code rewrite was not, my understanding, was not just to clean up our code. We had a problem with major, major, huge subdivisions getting approved in this parish and smaller developments like this not able to get through. Because this incentive program, it's wonderful. It allows for better, smarter development, and this gentleman, I do understand, is the first one to take advantage of it. I can't wait to see more of these, because these are low-impact. This is 17 homes. I normally sit here and look at subdivisions for, what, 300? And the room is stacked with people. This is the best outcome for all parties. This gentleman makes money, it's low-impact development, it could be, I hate to say it could be a lot worse, but it really could be, and we've seen what that looks like. It's not about correcting past mistakes, it's about moving forward and doing this better. And in my opinion, this development does do that. Correct, I've got about 1,000 notes in here to, and questions for the developer, but I do like the plan. My first question is the pond parcel. I know that there are a certain amount of trees, where exactly, and what is the overall intention with this pond parcel? Is it supposed to be recreational for residents to fish in? Is it specifically designated for the trees? What's, what's the?
Its primary intent is for the drainage and, and water retention.
Right.
So, you know, to say that, it, I mean, it's certainly going to be deep enough where you could put fish in it, and it could be, I mean, it's for the, for the occupants.
Yeah, but it's dry. It's dry. We have it dry, yeah.
I take that back.
Okay, so it is, so it is to remain dry?
Yeah.
Yes. But the tree, the cypress trees in there were at the recommendation of the planning.
Yes, no, they're, they're wonderful. I just, I would like to ask if maybe we could fence either side of parcels 11 and 10, if the intent is not for this pond to be, you know, open for recreational use or whatever. It does seem.
If that's your desire, I mean, that's not, there's no downside to that.
Yeah, I just think that it's, it would protect, I mean, you've got the sidewalk coming down the subdivision, almost leading directly to it, it just kind of a recipe for disaster with a kid.
Yeah, really.
In a retention pond.
Yeah, we'll agree with that.
I'm sorry?
Just the two sides, while the rear?
Well, the rear doesn't butt, one of their, the rear has a, a landscape buffer behind it, and let's see, what's just south of that? Thank you, Aaron.
I just want to make sure.
The rear, the rear as well, I'm sorry, it does butt up to Fairfield Oaks, but I'm not sure exactly how that, if that would.
We would rather, in order to drain Fairfield Oaks, we don't want to put a fence right on that, that line right there in the back. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I was mainly thinking about the parcels in the subdivision as it's plotted, simply because those are going to be cleared, developed anyway.
Yeah, the fence, from what I learned, those are, in a lot of cases, not desirable because they, you know, the, the owners don't maintain them, they become more of a nuisance than anything else.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think on 10 and 11, with it being visible from people's homes, they're, you know, like, more likely to maintain a nice fence on the side right there.
Sure.
I didn't even think about the one on the back. Thank you, Aaron. And I did have a question, why didn't you continue the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street?
Well, it was an added expense, and again, it was a lot of give and take. In order to get approval for the incentive, it was only required on one side, so it was a matter of cost savings.
I had a note that if the pond were going to be filled in for recreational, I would have loved to have seen the sidewalk on both sides, but since it is not, I'm okay with it only on one. Okay, I have one other question, but this is for staff. In order to add the fence to this plot, is, that's not going to be considered a major change to this final or anything? Okay, all right, that's all. Thank you.
Do we have a motion or anything?
No.
I'm waiting, I'm sure.
Any more comments? Concerns?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with waivers.
Mrs. Seager?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in the second, please vote.
Oh, motion to approve, pass.
There we go, motion carries. We're going to move on to item number nine. Ms. Doris Monk.
Is there any?
Agenda item number nine, new business, amendments to the code of ordinances, part two, Unified Development Code, chapters 100 through 900.
That is testing, testing.
Request to speak again?
You want to try it?
There we go.
About now.
I got you.
Okay. So I usually start off the amendments with just a quick summary of what's been going on, because I know y'all see several rounds of amendments over the course of a year. So rounds nine and 10 were adopted at the May council hearing, and amendment round 11 was introduced at the council hearing and would be up for final consideration in June. So that's kind of what's been going on recently with all the amendments you all have seen. I'll kind of jump right in. The, this, this round of amendments is split up as part one and part two. So on page one of chap 12 of Attachment A, it starts off with proposed amendments to St. Tammany Parish Code of Ordnances, Part One, Code of Ordnances. We can discuss these if you all like, we'll, we'll leave the floor open if there are any comments or suggestions by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I just want to make note that these proposed tech changes are not under the authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission and should not be included with the recommendation of tonight's consideration. So to start, I'm going to start on page three of 12, which jumps right into part two of the Unified Development Code.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like, if, okay with the chairman, for Aaron to go over the part one section to.
Oh, sure.
And the reason why we put it on the report, even though it's not the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, is to be very transparent. So please just give our, give everyone a high-level overview, because, you know, we want just, we just want to inform everybody.
Clear and transparent.
Mm-hmm. And Ted, I'll say, if you wouldn't mind stopping me if I misspeak on these, because I know these were spearheaded by the engineering department. Primarily, the, the change in part one is to the fee section of the ordinance. When we adopted the new Unified Development Code in December of '23, these were the fees that were adopted in chapters 900, and they never were amended in part one of the, the fee structure for, for the parish. So really, I mean, we're just keeping it consistent for what was approved in December of '23 and what is current today in chapter 900.
I do have a question. Okay, so in the.
After what we kind of just discussed with Brewster Place, so, and this is, minor modification to subdivision plots, I made myself a note. If the change is requested by the commission, is the developer still charged $500 to make a minor change to their plot? So like I just asked, if, if I would have asked for the sidewalk on that, on Brewster Place, an additional sidewalk, would they be charged $500 for that?
No, ma'am, I can take a stab at that one. So no, ma'am, that is specific to when we have an approved plan. So obviously Brewster Place is still going through the review process, the markups, the comments, and the back and forth, if you will. With that specific requirement of the $500, as much like your minor amendment, major amendment to PUDs, they come in, we've gone through the process, the plan has been approved, and they say, hey, for X, Y, and Z reasons, the plan approved is not working. Well, in order for staff to review it, maybe have to re-advertise it, maybe have to re-bring it back to the commission, that is that fee associated with it. So while it's still under the review, the initial fee paid by the developer is covering these back and forth in the staff review time. Anything after the approval is when those would be subject to it at their request.
Okay, perfect.
So example would be Beeta Cove tonight.
Yeah. Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right.
All right, so I'm going to start with number one in part two, which is on page three of 12. The parish had a request for, well, a potential request for a micro distillery. We were asked what zoning classification this use would go into, and we realized that it's not an allowable use anywhere in our Unified Development Code. So while the new Code of Ordnances added micro brewery and several regulating minimum standards for that use, it, it didn't take into account micro distillery. So really, number one is several pages of us adding it as a conditional use in HC1, HC2, and a permitted use in HC3, HC4, I1, and I2 with minimum standards for that use.
Okay, so on, for them to be brewer.
Okay, so on, for them to be brewery or distillery, where it states we're removing onsite.
On site tasting rooms shall be subject to the use and parking standards. So that is separate from micro distilleries and breweries, correct? Like, we're making a very clear designation between micro breweries, micro distilleries, so.
We're stating how that use should be parked, but also that it's an allowable use when part of a micro brewery or a micro distillery.
Okay, I'm just curious as to why the line item where it says onsite tasting rooms shall, shall be subject to the use and parking standards of a bar and limitations provided for in-state law. Facilities may also include that line item that is scratched out, simply because that, to me, goes directly with brewery or distillery and not with micro brewery. So like, I mean, the reason this was added, there's a huge difference between a place like Abido, where I live, and a place like, I don't know, a local one. There was one, Chafunkta in Ponchatoula, that it just had a small retail storefront. I mean, it is huge difference. So I understand the need for the add, but I'm wondering why the removal of the language pertaining to parking, tasting rooms, bars.
This is not proposing removal of that language, it's proposing the addition of that language. The blue is addition.
Right, but on my page three, this is scratched out in red. Look.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's just the language about the tasting rooms.
I jumped ahead to minimum standards.
Yeah.
Because that, I see what you're asking now. That's the definition, and we tried to take all minimum standards out of definitions and put them where they belong. That's why there's confusion, because I thought you were referencing where we put them in the minimum standards.
I got you, okay.
So they're, they're in the minimum standards and out of the definition, word for word.
So this is just to, look at, perfect.
It's clean up, basically.
Perfect, thank you.
If you jump ahead where you can see we're adding it to, to HC1 and 2 as a conditional use, and HC3 and 4 as a permitted use, and then go to page eight of 12 where you get into the specific use standards, subsection F is where you see that language added back in under minimum use standards. So I know we just went through several pages. Y'all stop me if anyone else has any questions? Do you have a question?
Can we add lighting restrictions under section G 123, where we've got everything about sound? Can we add something regarding lighting restrictions too?
Yes, we have a lighting ordinance, which should come into play anytime lights are proposed on any type of commercial development. It regulates lumens and, you know, where they may shine requires photometric plans. But if you have anything specific, we can absolutely add it here.
Just specifically where it says. Just the language with the residential zoning classification or use. Speakers must be located 50 feet. Is that, so lighting is addressed under, when it abuts a residential?
Lighting is addressed for all commercial properties that impose lighting on their site plan.
Okay, perfect. That's what I, I wanted to make sure. Okay.
So number two is really, it became a request that was initiated from the Board of Adjustments members because they saw an increase in the number of variance applications that were owners of lots of record that were requesting variances for either front or rear yard setbacks when they were trying to place manufactured homes on their property. As you all probably know, lots of record are typically around 25 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. And a typical mobile home is around 60 to 80 feet long. So when you impose a 25-foot front yard setback or a 20-foot rear yard setback with that length of mobile home on, on this typical sized lot, you run into some setback issues. The planning department did a study of variance requests for the placement of mobile homes on lots of record, and we showed an average variance of nine and a half feet for the front yard and 9.8 feet in the rear yard. So we saw an overwhelming trend of a request for a variance of 15 front, 15-foot front yard setback and 10-foot rear yard setback. And we basically determined that the suggested text change showing a 15-foot front and 10-foot rear is appropriate for the average mobile home, the average lot size, when we're talking about lots of record. And it would have eliminated all but two variance requests from the years 2020 to 2024.
Ms. Seager, you got a comment?
I do. I'm looking at page one and page two of 12. And I noticed that the filing fees for final subdivision goes from $80 per lot to $500 a lot. I'm not sure what percent increase that is, but it's fivefold, something like that. Number two, the sewage and water review fee doubles. Number three, it more than triples the linear foot of water distribution pipe. Number four, the, that more than, water supply facility more than doubles. Number five, more than doubles. Number six, more than doubles. Number. Number one, the following fees as built goes from $150 to $500, filing fees plus $100 a lot. And number four, sewage and water review doubles. What is the purpose of increasing these fees? If somebody could answer that for me?
Yes, sir, so I absolutely can. I want to correct two things, if you don't mind, on the increase per lot. You had mentioned $500 per lot. That is incorrect, and I believe it should be reflected correctly in the report, is a $500 filing fee. That is the filing fee that allows us to make the case, put the case in, spend the review time for staff, produce these packets for you guys. That's the filing fee associated, and that is standard with every major, minor amendment, tentative plan, zoning change. You will see a 500 across the board on all parish requirements. I think some of them change depending on size of property, but essentially it's a $500 filing fee, plus the additional requirement for the lot fee. The reason for the change, as Ms. Erin had mentioned earlier, is that in our UDC, when we went and adopted that back in last August, the fees that you're looking at right now are in that code and in that document right now. If you want me to answer, why did they increase back in August of last year? It's because when we took a look at our code that had not been changed in decades, those fees represented something long before COVID, long before inflation, long before the cost of living. You name the increases, none of those, long before material costs, construction costs, man hour costs, none of those were reflective of that. Review costs, staff costs. The code of ordinance in August made those recommendations to the fees that you just referenced tonight. All this amendment is doing is saying we have a fee structure in chapter one of our code. It is currently not consistent with chapter 900 of our code that we recently adopted. So we have to get those documents to speak correctly together. I have asked because I wanted to know, because I am currently charging these fees. I wanted to make sure, which ones do I need to charge when I have two legal ordinances that say, hey, these are the fees required? And in our code of ordinance, when we adopted the UDC, I've actually verified with the legal department, the latest and greatest basically will supersede, and we write our ordinance to that extent. So the chapter 900 and the fees you're referencing, we are allowed to charge, and those are ones we should be charging. The whole point in why Ms. Erin said we're taking the initiative as the engineering department is, these are the fees we collect, and I have two differing numbers, so I need to get them corrected. If you want a further breakdown of where those costs come from, I'm happy to produce it for you. But it's, the, the short answer, sorry, I kind of went long, but the short answer is it's catching up with times that everything else is costing more, and our fees have not been reflective of the time and effort and the cost associated with it.
Thank you very much. That was a very adequate answer. I'm going to use that and hitchhike on that issue.
Yes, sir.
To mention to my fellow commissioners that we have not had a stipend raised for serving on this commission since before Katrina. And if we are raising fees and we understand that costs have gone up, then perhaps we should realize that our costs as commissioners has also increased. And perhaps we could redesignate some of this generated funding that we have here toward giving us a $5 race something, so that we're not slapped in the face for doing a civic duty.
You would not hear me argue that, sir.
Sorry to get you involved in that.
I hope Ross Ross is listening.
Erin?
All right, I'm going to continue on. So number three is to clarify the appropriate buffers required for scenic rivers. Right now, we have exhibit 600-3-5, which is a required waterway buffers. It says that there are 35 feet required when your property abuts an intermittent waterway and 50 feet required when your property abuts a blue lined waterway as determined by the USGS quadrangle map. I hope I said that right. This is just a correction to be reflective of the correct buffers when the, the property is not governed by Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries. And that's determined by the engineering department.
Ms. Robert?
Yeah, just a quick question. I know you guys are requiring that to be shown on survey at the moment. I know we just saw that earlier with the resub for 110, the Menhimes. Can we get language added to say if it's an intermittent stream or the type that it is, so that it's put on there with the?
Well, if you read the subdivision ordinance, it requires that all natural areas to be preserved are shown on the survey. So we can make that comment every time.
But there's a, so it's 35 to 50, and we're showing 35 buffers on either side. But can we just have language added that states, you have to state what type of waterway it is? Yeah, like if it's an intermittent stream or if it's made, like what the designation is for it? Okay. Thank you.
I will tell you, just as an FYI, I don't think that's an incorrect ask at all, but the buffer itself also kind of defines what it is, right? Laterals, intermittent streams have a 35-foot buffer, blue line streams have a 50, scenic has 100. So when you see that buffer, it is relative to the designation of the stream, but it would make a lot of sense to.
I know that, but I like for other people to know that when they see that on the property, when they buy property, that it's on the survey and it's shown. And then they can't call you guys and say, what is this 70-foot space on either side of this little ditch that I'm being required to maintain?
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Ms. Erin?
Number four is to amend the subdivision regulations to clarify the reviewing authority for the Planning and Zoning Commission at the concept subdivision plan review phase of a major subdivision review. So our old code in section 12594 essentially had the same language that you're seeing underlined and bolded in blue and added back into chapter 800, which is, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall review whether the subdivision plans meet the minimum requirements and shall consider health, shall consider whether the plans ensure and conform to the best interests of public health, safety, and welfare. The planning commission shall reserve the right to stipulate any reasonable additional requirements to subdivisions. And as you all probably saw, we did receive an email from Ms. Robert asking the question to our legal department, what constitutes or stipulates a reasonable additional requirement for subdivision? So on behalf of that question, and the commission, the planning department has put together a legal transmittal, excuse me, and sent it to the district attorney's office for interpretation and more input. So we'll get those results back soon and hopefully disseminate that information to you all. And we wouldn't think differently of it if you all would like to vote to kind of exclude this requested amendment from tonight's amendment list until we have an answer on that.
Commissioner Narcisse?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to approve, but exclude the last item. How would I word this?
There's one more item, though.
Oh, sorry. Never mind, I'll shut up.
The last item is to amend chapter 900 infrastructure to clarify the appropriate fees for the construction or modification of a sewer or water system associated with a subdivision development. And all that is, is taking out that $40, both for connections to parish system for sewage and water.
Yes.
Yes. Told you I got you. All right, there's also one more that is not in our packet currently. We're going to take over the apartment issue and HC2 issue tonight as well. So if you can kind of give us an overview of that one, do you have?
Is that not in the packet?
It is not in the packet.
It's not in my packet, which I gave you.
It's not in my packet and ain't in their packet either.
It was emailed, and I believe some of you all, those who were not at the meeting last week should have received it in your packet.
It's in my packet from last week. Do you have the language on it?
I do, yeah, of course. I can talk about it, but I just want to make note that these are two different ordinances for text changes 11 and 12. So if you all feel comfortable voting on those together, or if you feel you need to vote on them separately.
I think it needed to be advertised again.
It doesn't, no. But it does, I would prefer that they're voted on separately.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be advertised separately, but we will vote for, vote on them separately. So let's take your motion, if you have it, for this one, and then we'll go on to the second one. Are there any comments about these particular amendments from the public? Any from the commission? And you got some?
On the second.
Okay, we got a motion, Ms. Robert? A motion? Want to repeat your motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the amendments excluding item number four, action by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to postpone that until, as stated, we get clarification from legal.
And Mr. Ross Monk?
I would like to second, I wasn't going to repeat every word she had said, but I will second that motion.
We have a motion in the second. Go ahead and vote.
Motion to approve carries.
All right, with that said, we're going to move on to the next item of business.
Commissioner, or chairman, I should say. I would like to point out the reason why the apartments in the HC2 did not have to be re-advertised, because we always advertise UDC amendments. So we're able to throw it on this particular agenda item because we don't specify which UDC amendments are being discussed until the week before when we issue the staff report. So we amended the staff reports to include this item.
Erin?
All right, so amendment number 12 is an overview on really the extensive history regarding the allowance of multifamily uses in the commercial zoning districts in the somewhat recent past. I'll try not to hit too many of the details, but just to kind of bring it to light. Prior to 2007, St. Timonie Parish Ordinance 523 was a governing ordinance for the parish and listed hotels and motels of 150 rooms or less and apartment hotels as conditional uses under the C2 Highway Commercial District. From 2007 to December of 2023, the St. Timonie Parish government administered the Land Development Code, which listed apartments as a permitted use under HC2 and HC3 Highway Commercial Districts. The HC2A Commercial District was added to the Unified Development Code in 2012 and listed apartments as a permitted use inclusive of lodging, allowing 200 rooms or less. In December of 2023, which was right around the same time that the Unified Development Code was adopted, the St. Timonie Parish Council introduced ordinance, which was a proposal to remove the term apartments from lodging as a permitted use in all highway commercial districts. And this ordinance was ultimately removed from the council agenda with no action in February of 2024. The currently administered Unified Development Code lists, listed dwellings multifamily as a permitted use in all multifamily zoning districts with various density allowances. The planned business campus district, the HC3 Highway Commercial District, and the HC4, HC4 Highway Commercial District. Housekeeping text amendment number six added dwelling multifamily as a conditional use within the HC2 Highway Commercial District, omitted the HC2A Highway Commercial District, and added use standards, which included those limited to multifamily dwellings constructed with specific zoning districts and those applicable to all multifamily uses regardless of districts. When we initially opened this session, we talked about rounds 10 and 11 recently being adopted. So those are the, the standards that you all saw recommended approval of and council recently adopted. So as of July 1, 2023, St. Timonie Parish had an estimated population of over 275,000 residents, and it caused St. Timonie Parish to be the fourth most populous parish in the state. And we are actually the only parish projected to increase in population in 2025 of those top four. We have an estimated 115,000 housing units, which encompass both owner occupied and rental residence. Between 2019 and 2023, approximately 78.8 of these units were owner occupied. So that indicates that around 21% are renter occupied. This distribution reflects the parish's predominantly suburban character, with significant portion of residents owning their houses and assumes the parish has around 24,000 rental properties, or just enough rental locations for under 9% of the population. We're expected to grow. We have demographic trends indicating that the age distribution within the parish is slightly higher, and we have a. slightly higher, and we have a fast-growing aging population, which suggests an increased need for a mix of housing types, including affordable housing and apartments. Our increase in population expectations, limited rental options, and increased commuting add strength on infrastructure and rising demands from single-person households and retirees seeking smaller maintenance-free living suggests allowing multifamily dwellings as a permitted use in more zoning classifications such as the HC2 Highway Commercial Zoning District with greater oversight in their development. On average, parishes with higher populations in Louisiana find apartments more desirable near major corridors along 190 and LA 21 within areas that have existing infrastructure and which are developed with high-quality design. This includes increased landscaping and pedestrian access. As such, staff recommends that a text change be initiated that would allow multifamily developments... Multifamily dwellings as a permitted use within the HC2 Highway Commercial District with enhanced use criteria and require higher design standards. So with that, if you flip to your page one of three of the text change, you'll see the implementation as suggested that we allow apartments or multifamily dwellings as a permitted use in HC2 District as a by-right use rather than additional, which was just Page two of three suggests these apartments or multifamily dwellings should have a maximum allowable density of one unit per 1,250 square feet of property. And then page... Down at the bottom, page two of three gets into all the suggested minimum use standards, which I can go over one by one, or if you all have any questions, feel free to let me know.
At this time, we'll hear from the audience that are here. We have one that does not wish to speak, but it's for it and wrote a letter. I'll pass around the letter. It may have come in email, I'm not sure, but I'll pass it around just in case. It's from Lacy Osborne, President and CEO of the Chamber of... St. Tammany Chamber. And in the meantime, while we're looking at that, Mr. Mike Soshe would like to speak.
Members of the commission, Mike Soshe, I'm President of Gulf State Development Real Estate. I've been practicing here for 35 years. I agree with the staff recommendation. We provided information from my company regarding that, input regarding that. The removal of HC... Of apartments multifamily in HC2 has had a lot of unintended consequences related to existing non-conforming uses, projects that were in the queue. I can tell you that the lack of rental housing with the cost of housing, the increased cost in insurance, the increased cost in property taxes, and maintenance in homes today are forcing a lot of elderly people that are of decent means into a more reliable renting situation, and we are looking at doing projects just like that right now. So there needs to be a more healthy balance, in my opinion. I have two daughters. One lives in Sacramento, one lives in Charleston. They frankly could not afford to live here. They do have higher salaries in those locations, and one, my younger daughter, lives in apartments, but there were very few options here that were affordable. There is still a disparity between the cost of building apartments and the rents that can be acquired here in this particular marketplace. It's roughly about $200 a month. Building costs, I have never seen come down. They just never seem to come down. Interest rates are a major factor in building anything right now, whether it's apartments or homes or anything else. That hopefully will come down at some time and open up some of these development opportunities. So I would ask you to consider adopting this particular ordinance change.
Mr. Marone?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. I urge you to support the recommendation and the change. You know, it's apartments, multifamily dwellings are an important mix to any community, right? I mean, for the community to really be vibrant and successful, it takes more than just one type of house or one type of business. You really need the entire mix, and apartments are part of that. It's very difficult to find a good location for apartments. We know that. You know that. You've had requests. It's very difficult to do that, and I recognize that. I would tell you that, at least in my view, there are a lot of HC2-type parcels or HC2 parcels that would be suited and well-suited for this type of use, maybe better than other areas of the parish that are not HC2. I would also point out that historically, we've had it. I mean, we had for a very long time, as Ms. Cook just mentioned out... Mentioned before, multifamily being permitted in HC2. We had one case that sort of turned that on its head, and I'm just... I would respectfully suggest that maybe we didn't have it wrong the first time, that the way we had it probably made sense. That case was a bit of an anomaly, I think, and so I urge you to put it back in. Finally, in my experience, and I believe that staff may have done an investigation on this, and so they can correct me if I'm wrong, but in my experience, most of the other jurisdictions that are sort of similar to St. Tammany do allow it, do allow multifamily in their Highway 2-type zones. So if you look at most of the other parishes that are similarly situated to St. Tammany, this would be a permitted use. So I urge you to support the staff's recommendation, and thank you for your consideration and time.
Mr. Hernandez, do you have anything to speak on? I'm a... I apologize, it said Amendment 9. Was that the last one we already passed, or is it this one?
It was number nine. It was the number on your agenda.
My apologies.
I'm used to being neglected, overlooked.
This is still number nine.
Yes, I know it's number nine, and I disagree with the previous supporters of this. The... You know, it's interesting, the apartments that we're speaking of were in HC2 and now proposing to go back in. Apartments are now... Were considered by the parish council, and there was a specific residential zoning that was used to have apartments as a consideration. Now HC2, which there are... You know, it's interesting that the staff makes use of the numbers that are there and how approximately a little less than half are small in nature, in small in nature, but yet they don't list the other portions that are much higher in terms of the acreage that's available under HC2. Those of us who are familiar with HC2 and know some of the locations where there are existing HC2s right now that are vacant, and know that there are large numbers of apartments that could be used under the HC2 designation, in which I'm sure is a consideration by those that are pushing for this right now. The HC2 has, depending on how close it is to adjacent residences, has either, you know, two different types of maximums in terms of height, and that was not mentioned in the presentation here in terms of the height differential. And of course, it's also then said that, oh, an additional foot could be added then if it's immediately adjacent to a residence. Well, an additional foot may not seem like a lot to those people who are immediately adjacent to this. It's also interesting that the previous consideration by this commission and the council has the conditional use designation included in there, but yet now it's being proposed to eliminate conditional use as part of this recommendation, which, again, you know, makes you wonder, well, I think that the decision that under HC2s, which there are a number of HC2s that are around, and many of them are vacant or underutilized. It's also interesting that we also have HC2s that had built something, but yet are... They built something, but they're not occupied. So I guess that even though, you know, those that are not occupied, I presume, could then be used for apartments, even though that would make an interesting change for that. I would just hope that you consider that the existing apartments that are presently approved in terms of the zoning category that they're in be left alone in terms of having apartments designated for the existing categories that are present, which there wasn't any time spent on those, and the existing Highway Commercial 2 designation be left alone and not be given, you know, this additional approval in terms of having apartments as designated. It's interesting that a number of other locations that have apartments under what's being called HC2 types are not the same as those requirements in St. Tammany Parish. And those of us who are familiar with those designations can tell you that there are a number of additional requirements under some other entities that approve it that aren't considered here in St. Tammany, and I would just ask you to just, you know, be careful about what you do. Thank you.
At this time, we'll hear any rebuttals for... I'll take the time to ask a couple of questions. I'll start with this to say that it might be beneficial to maybe postpone this until maybe next meeting so we can get more input as far as the public, and maybe it wasn't quite possibly advertised the right way, knowing that it was there last time. I mean, just out of fairness, if we don't feel the same, then I understand. Number two, there... Correct me if I'm wrong, there are other ways to... And when I say correctly, I mean, obviously, it was done legally, just not with enough... I wouldn't suggest that we would do anything legally, just saying that we don't have the direct communication, if that makes sense. Number two, I would say there are ways to make HC2... I mean, there are ways to make apartments happen in other ways of the code. It's not like we're saying it's impossible to do. I think HC2 is more ubiquitous around the parish, and it would open up different opportunities for people to take advantage of apartments in places where they don't necessarily fit and would have a lot more opportunities for these things to slip in. I know it has to come through our eyes and things like that, but it would open up the floodgates, in my opinion. And with that, I'll go to the other commissioners. Ms. Robert, sorry.
I agree with you. Looking at the map of the parish, the zoning map, there are HC2 properties. They are so different from each other, depending on which one you look at. There are some that are perfectly suitable for apartment buildings, and there are some that are not in any way, shape, or form. Additionally, I know that Ross... St. Tammany Corp., didn't they just order a study on affordable housing and zone? I mean, we've got comprehensive rezoning coming up in not, what, two years or less? I think we are kind of putting the cart before the horse with trying to put it back in as a permitted use right now when we don't know. Overall, there are already studies and things that are being looked at for how to manage this a little bit better in the future. In my opinion, it is best that we leave it as a conditional use in this district. Poor Mr. Soshe out here. We had how many people show up back in December for an HC2 property?
The last week.
Yeah. No, no, no. I mean, for a property that you had that was HC2 that, you know, like, I feel like the community has... And look, I'm not saying that that should happen on every one, but it just goes to show that the parcels are so different that I think right now, leaving apartments in HC2 as a conditional use is the best bet until we have more concrete data to fall back on. So I would make a motion to deny.
That's the way it would work. Mrs. Seager?
You made a motion to deny?
Oh, yes.
I'll second her motion.
We got a motion in the second, Mr. Arsmont?
Well, I'm just going to make a comment, but you already have a motion on the floor. I was going to make a motion to approve, so I'll do that in my vote.
Okay. Mr. Loney?
Just after y'all done voting.
Was that?
I'll speak after y'all done voting.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? All right, let's hope. The motion is to deny. Motion in the second is to deny.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five.
What do we do?
I think that's why you're supposed to make a motion to approve. That's Robert's rules of order, because then I think that would end it. It would have ended it, but not a motion to deny, but I'll defer to legal on that.
Yeah. We needed to bring in a six, for the motion to deny to pass.
So that's a moot vote, and then we go to Rennie's vote? All right, I'm going to ask for another motion.
My motion is to approve.
Mrs. Seager?
I'll second.
The only person in history who's ever motioned to deny, and I like it. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please vote.
Sorry. Seven yays and three nays, motion to approve, pass. Carries, sorry.
All right.
I just wanted to say, you know, definitely, you know, for advertisement, we take it very seriously, and it was, you know, probably double the amount of advertisement needed based on how we advertise our UDCs.
Got you.
Because we just advertised a UDC as amendments being discussed, and the report comes out, and so this one got a double whammy for zoning commission last week and planning commission this week.
Yes, sir, and I apologize for misspeaking. Yes, ma'am.
Is it too late to make a motion?
Never too late.
Lacy Osborne, CEO of the St. Tammany Chamber, I want to thank you all for your service. I agree, you need public input, but the fact is, you don't get a lot of public input from both sides in all of these processes. And so we do work closely with the home builders and St. Tammany Corporation. We are obviously pro-business. We are very concerned about several things in the parish. Voter turnout is very low. That's another example of people are just not getting out there. And information, there's a lot of false information out there about development and the need for... And I'm not going to say affordable housing, I'm going to say workforce housing.
Attainable housing.
Yeah, so I want to congratulate you on approving this, and anything that we can do to provide information to you on any... You know, we can't provide on the smaller cases, but... And we look forward to the housing study that is going to happen this year. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arsmont?
A move to adjourn.
All right.